I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. The time is 6:01 PM. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Reed, do you want to call the rule, please?
Mr. Raymer.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
You're all present. Mr. Mammon's here. Mr. Wasik is also here.
Thank you. Tonight's a special meeting for Germantown trustees for the purpose of discussing the joint economic development district. We have a few things on the agenda. I think the reason we scheduled this meeting so quickly today was to join back after the school was able to hear about the draft contract of the JED. So before we get into the discussions or moving through that, I'll pause here and ask if there's any, anyone that wants to speak, public comments. Please, if you have any comments, hold your comments aside.
This is kind of such a big crowd.
Well, we have some folks online that may want to speak up, so go ahead, Mr. Cross, if you want to go first.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Mark Cross, 7444 South Dyber Road, Germantown, Ohio. So after the 7/29/21 meeting, I'm still unsure of several issues that deal with the draft JED document. Do the entities now support the stated purpose of the JED listed in the recital section, the purpose section, and specifically the economic development plan values and goals for the future section that states, "The JED will distribute income tax revenues equitably to preserve and provide needed infrastructure and community service to support the school district and other businesses within the JED, as opposed to the initial advertised purpose of making the entities whole for income tax loss when the schools are moved to the JED property." Is that pretty much what you guys have decided upon, or you're gonna go with the purpose stated in the contract? Because I think there was...
I mean, that's, from my perspective, that's what the purpose of the JED is after we've discussed it.
Okay, I just wanted to hear, I was gonna say, because even at the Monday meeting, I was kinda unsure of what was going on there. Has there been any more discussion with legal counsel whether the stated contributions to the district in the draft contract actually fulfill the requirements stated in ORC 715.72F? As I stated at the 7/21 meeting, on page three, section seven of the draft contract states, "In accordance with section 715.72F of the revised code, the contributing parties each agree to provide services and improvements to the district to facilitate economic development in the district. Do the amounts stated on page four to pay initial legal, administrative, and other costs fulfill any conditions stated in ORC 715.72?" This kinda gets it back. You discussed a little bit at the school board meeting. The fact that Germantownship will provide police protection is nothing in addition to what you already are providing. Same with Fire EMS. It's nothing in addition to what you're already providing. Kinda, to me, in the, in the contract, it's kind of vague of what you are actually providing. Has that been discussed by legal counsel, or...
It has, not subsequent to the 7/29 meeting. But yeah, this, I mean, and this is where I'll let you go ahead and finish, and we'll get Brenda to make sure she's on the line, and she can speak too. But I mean, we did have this pretty detailed discussion, I think, a couple of times with Brenda on the call, specifically on this topic.
Good. Let me know what you hear. So finally, I wish to propose another possible option for the entities to consider to allow the management of the proposed JED to follow the law and benefit the Valley View School District. For years one through five, after instituting the JED, all income tax revenue received from the workers in the JED property be held in a separate escrow account by each entity. The funds would not go into the general fund of each entity and could not be spent. At the end of year five, or at any time during that period, the JED Board will consult with the Valley View School Board and any other businesses that wish to move into the JED property to ascertain if any projects are in need of funding from income tax proceeds. If so, escrow funds could be released to fund projects according to the purpose of the JED. Likewise, the contract could also include maintaining these escrow accounts from year six to ten if the schools or businesses anticipate a significantly expensive project during that time period that was not anticipated during the initial construction period. This plan would ensure that the entities don't place the income tax revenues in their respective general funds and will prevent the entities from spending the funds that may be needed to improve the JED property. If placed in the general funds, there would be no control on how the funds are spent and no accountability to the public. If, however, at the end of the five-year period, the schools or businesses have no use for the accumulated funds, entities may move the funds from the escrow accounts into their general funds and use the money as they see fit. I think this was what Mike Moyer brought up yesterday, last meeting, about goes into a general fund, we spend it, then the schools say, hey, we need that money back. How would that be accounted for? This would be a big problem, you know, and projects that may not be anticipated now, but may occur in five years. Say they want to pave some, some more sidewalks or asphalt some more side of, up to the ball field. Or they want to astroturf a field, a big project that would certainly be a part of the purpose of the JED. Or again, they want to improve the sound or the lighting in the auditorium that they're gonna use for plays and stuff. So this plan, even if it's probably considered outside the box and is probably unique to any other JED contract in the state, would have several advantages. It would follow the Ohio revised code in the use of the tax proceeds. It would force the entities to account for the funds they receive. The income tax proceeds would benefit the staff and teachers who are paying the tax if spent on projects to improve the JED. The funds would be available for funding a project at the K-12 site that was not initially possible due to lack of funding. In conclusion, this plan, if deemed possible by legal counsel, would provide to the businesses in the JED, the JED Board, the entities, and a framework ensuring simplicity, transparency, accountability, and would then benefit the population paying the tax. Again, since we have three accounts here, I think that would also make, when they have the audits, much more easier. They could say, this is where the money is, that the money is, that was given to the entities is still there in that escrow account. Easy peasy. You don't have to account for where the money has gone. Something you may want to think about, again, for those purposes. I think especially transparency, accountability, that's going to help the people that are questioning the JED. You know, is it, is it there to serve the purpose of the JED? And is that money going to be there when we need the money? Luckily, on the JED Board, you've got a school board member or a school board representative and a representative of the employees. So they, you know, when they need, at least yearly, they will have some input as far as, hey, we're looking at this project, and you fund it. You know, so then you would have the money available. Versus, it goes into the general fund, it could be spent on anything. Could be spent on, you know, salaries, whatever. And at the end of that five-year period or whatever, you have no money left. You've already spent it. So that's something just to consider, is what, to hopefully make your decision easier. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
I think we need to discuss that one more time, because we've had this discussion a few times. But let's circle back to the three things that we had on the agenda for tonight. I'll add that as a fourth item for confirmation on the, we called this last meeting, confirmation on the contribution and what we do with that initial money. So the three things I had from last meeting, one, easy one, Nick, I think you were gonna work with your counsel to get a confirmation over to Brenda. So that's taken care of. Brian, you took care of the draft contract. It got sent to the school, and we obviously went and met with the school. You did a presentation there, so that was taken care of. The third one that I failed on, and this is where I need Brenda. Are you on the line tonight, Brenda?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm struggling a little bit on this legal description piece. I called the county last Friday, I believe it was, not, not this last Friday, but the one before, about 10 days ago, and spoke with them regarding the description on the properties. And truthfully, maybe it's because of my ignorance on the whole situation, I got caught in a loop with them on trying to understand exactly what we're missing and what needs to be done at this point. I followed up with the superintendent after the discussion with the county, because I was confused. And, and one of the purposes I was confused was, one of the properties was still listed under, I believe it's WNA, which is the farm that had previously held the land before we did the transfer. And so on the county website, it still says it's under WNA Farms LLC or whatever versus the school board. And when I called the superintendent to try to understand why that hadn't been recorded, because the transfer happened quite a while ago, he was quite perplexed himself and said he'd reach out to his legal counsel and get back with me, and he did, and said that something along the lines of it wouldn't be recorded on the county site until the next tax cycle is completed. But that it had been formally completed, he would give me the information. He hasn't done that, unfortunately. I sent him a text earlier today, and I haven't heard back from him. But one, I'm a little bit confused as to what we need, and two, I'm not 100% certain we're gonna be able to get that unless his legal counsel has that information, because the county's not gonna reflect it for a while.
Okay, so... Yeah, so Haley indicated there were three parcels for which we don't have legal descriptions. That the legal descriptions she provided don't include those three parcels. So we need a legal description for those three parcels, either aggregate or independent. If one of the parcels is still listed on the county site in somebody else's name, that's a bit, a bit complex. However, if the school district acquired that property, they should have a legal description in their purchase contract of exactly what they purchased, even if it hasn't been completely recorded on the auditor's website. The real question is not who the auditor says owns it, but who, you know, the county recorder's office, you know, where you record deeds, who do they say owns it? What we need to make sure is that they say the school district owns it, not so much what the county auditor says.
Okay.
So...
I'll, I'll need to hear from the superintendent, because he was supposed to follow up, because he was, after he talked to counsel, he was certain that it had been completed, you know, months ago. It just wasn't going to be shown on the county website that way for a period of time. Not the recorder, but on the auditor's site. But let me see what he has, because he was confident they had the legal descriptions, but I'm yet to see that. So Haley did give me three parcel numbers. That's why, how I was able to get in touch with the county and ask them specifically on those parcel numbers. But let me see what the superintendent gives, and I'll, I'll still try to provide that as soon as he passes that along.
Okay.
I thought Burkhart did the survey for that.
That's what he was saying. Yeah, he thought Burkhart didn't.
I think they can get it for us.
The only thing was, I won't get into all the confusion, but like, the amount of acreage and stuff did not match up to some of the documents I would see. So there was, there was quite a bit of confusion. I couldn't reconcile it on a Friday afternoon. I told Haley, I said, I give up. It's Friday evening, and I'm giving up on this.
Um, you know, Burkhart did the other, the other parcels that they own, you know, Burkhart did those surveys. Because, because if Burkhart did the surveys, then they should have the description in their files still. The property owner should always keep a copy of the property description.
So, which he, he claims they do. It's just a matter of getting into it. So let's hope I can close that one out before the end of the week, and I think we have a little bit of time on that. So that was the third item. I think the reason we were meeting so quickly on the JED was because after we met with the school, we wanted to circle back if there were questions coming out of the, the school meeting.
I think Mike was...
Okay. Coming, coming out of the school meeting that we could have answered by, by Brenda or anybody else. But Brian, Nick, you both attended. I, I didn't have any takeaways, that anybody was unclear on anything. We were able to answer just a few very simple cursory questions that they had. Brian, feel the same way? Anything else to discuss in the school board meeting? Okay. My, my impression, just for everybody else's benefit from that meeting, was that they were going to hold the vote until September unless we asked them to do a special meeting. Do you guys feel the same way on that?
Yeah.
So they had a board member, for everyone's benefit, they had a board member not there on, on last Monday. And so I think they wanted to wait until they had a full board to do the, to do the vote. So I think their next board meeting, same night as ours, right?
Yeah.
September, I can't recall. I had looked it up before I got in here, but that will be the next time that they will meet and likely look to vote. Now Brenda, I guess, from your perspective, do they need to have the property descriptions and everything finalized before they would petition if they choose to petition in?
That would be best, to have the, the legal descriptions all there, although they could do it by parcel number.
Okay.
If they're approving, they're approving signing, you know, the petitions to be in the JED and consenting to having their property included in the JED as both the property owner and the business operator for the school. So they could sign the petitions on the basis of the parcel numbers. We need to have the legal description on the actual JED contract, but they could go forward with signing the petitions on the basis of parcel numbers.
Okay. So that's September 13th. I'll work to try to get you what you need or get you in touch with a lot of people to get that information. So I think that's the three takeaways from last meeting. Is there anything else anybody else had from last meeting they want to discuss before we, in this process?
Just one minor thing. I sent an email to the group today for your presentation, and Brian saw it, just adding amount, instead of just percentages on that. That one slide that shows the breakdown of, there's been a lot of questions about how much money is actually even involved in this, so.
I think it makes sense when you have a public meeting. The last piece is what Mr. Cross brought up, and I think, you know, we've discussed this ad nauseam at this point. I think there's, at, at four, and obviously there's probably an infinite amount of patchwork, but we can either choose to continue forward with what's been draft approved or draft agreed to and approved by the prosecutors and legal counsels. As they've said multiple times, that this meets the code from their perspective. Or we can revisit what the contribution is and how it will be accounted for. I highly believe, and this is my own personal view, just like everything else here, is that when we get to the public meeting, we're gonna get the same feedback that we've gotten frequently from Mr. Cross, and we'll get it from others, because I think it's very logical. I think it has a lot of merit. So the question is, do we want to wait until the public hearing to hear what the entire public, whoever attends and has interest, has to say and potentially make wholesale changes based on what they have to say? Or do we want to take the time now, make adjustments, and go through the process of getting these things reapproved before we go to a public hearing?
Good question. Even if it's just, even if Mark is the only one, they were gonna hear from the public, so.
That's right.
It needs to be... I'm sure Mark will be there. Yeah. Hope so.
I think we got a few interested parties that don't show up, for sure. And I think there'll be more than just Mark.
Well, we hope quite a few people show up, but that's the point.
That's right.
So, yeah, it is a good question. I'd be interested to see what everybody thinks on that. I think, I think we can all, I think we're gonna all agree that that's probably the biggest item that we're gonna have from a takeaway standpoint.
Yeah, sustained...
I think a lot of us have talked enough with the community. We kinda know where that is. The big question is, you know, do we put the money into the JED? Or do we let the municipalities take the money and provide for the tenant of the JED district when they need it?
Is that money ever gonna come back, though? Once it goes out, is it ever gonna come back?
It's a good question.
I don't see a scenario where that happens.
You know how it works when you miss out. From a value standpoint, you get money, it's, it's, a lot of times it's spent as soon as you have it, right?
Right. So that's, that would be my concern with that.
That's, that's what we've heard at most of our council meetings.
I think the struggle for me through this whole thing is, there's nothing, I, I don't see a benefit from Valley View. There's nothing that Valley View's gonna benefit from all this money that comes in and goes out. When it comes to our general fund and you guys' general fund, it's gone. They can, they can request a comeback. That's, that's not a guarantee. So if they wanna, whoever said, uh, artificial turf field or something in an auditorium, are we gonna be able? Because it's government. The money's, like you just said, the money's gonna be spent. It's, it's already, it's, it's coming in, you're expecting it, you, you're gonna have a project. You're gonna do the roads or whatever. It's gonna be spent. So at what point is that?
I think we choose to do it the way it's written. You know, Farmersville would proceed with, I don't know if it'd be a separate account, but it'd probably be a subaccount underneath our general fund, something like that. So say, hey, this is, this is JED money. I think that's the way we'd have to do it, because otherwise, it will get spent, not attached to it, but it'll happen.
We commit a percentage that goes back automatically, then?
And one thing to keep in mind, too, even as, as these JEDs work, it doesn't necessarily, they're not written at all for that they have to benefit the tenant completely, even. So there's a mixture between the tenant and the municipality to provide services to that space, so keep that in mind as well.
Yeah. But as of now, I'd say there's no benefit to the school at all.
Yeah. And this is where I was a little bit surprised, because I, I felt like there would be more push from the school. Maybe there will be at some point for them to say that we don't feel like there's enough benefit for us. I think what they're saying is that, you know, they, they see communities come together, that they pass the school levy. There is a benefit to them, and they will have new facilities on them, and they want to have the municipalities that support them to, to, you know, be able to continue to provide the services that they have today without raising additional funds from other taxes later in the future. And so that's the benefit, as we described it. I, I don't know that, I tend to agree with you, that I see a clear, transparent benefit solely from this tax revenue without taking into account all those other extraneous things. But I have, I have came forward on this one, and I won't say a full circle, because I'm definitely not full circle yet, but I have came forward and realized that there will be incremental costs to us, and it doesn't have to be as if we're taking this money and setting it aside to give back to the JED district, because that's not solely how these things are structured, and it's definitely not the way that other ones in the state of Ohio have been structured to date. So I, I tend to agree with what Mr. Cross said. I think it's a very reasonable and a wise approach, is that you take some of that construction revenue and the time that, you know, the schools are still sitting in the other entities, jurisdictions, and not within the JED. And you set that money aside. I, I would actually even be favor, make it more simplistic than that, in that, you know, if you guys are doing the tax collection, we want to get set in a, a JED fund for the first three years or whatever, and the intention is. And the reason I say three and not five is because by the time we get this established, possible, there'll only be three years of construction left. I mean, right now, they're staying August of '24. So we say three years, and then have that money be set to be distributed out to the JED over a given, over, over the life of the JED contract, you know, and, and more monies can be added to it. There's nothing wrong with that. But it sits and collects interest until it gets used for economic development, and there will never be a question of whether this thing truly supports economic development within the district or not.
18075 Jamaica.
Just make sure they keep it. Don't speak loud, that's fine.
So, so with regards to the first five years, which is predominantly against construction, can you guys give any thought to either reducing the JED tax rate for the current school employees that are out there or exempting the high school building, which would be a legal permissible thing, according to Brenda from several meetings ago? Because otherwise, you've got people at the high school, whose their tax money is now going into this JED fund, but the people at the elementary and the middle school, theirs is not. But, you know, we'd still be collecting the construction revenue, which is gonna be significant. So I just think from a fairness standpoint, you know, why, why should we expect the high school people to be kicking into this money that may or may not eventually come back to the elementary and the middle school?
We admitted that a while. She, she said there wasn't a way we could exempt.
I, I do think there are all the buildings.
Because it's on a separate parcel, right?
Well, there's a building within the JED. I believe, Brenda, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but at one of the meetings many months ago, and I don't even remember if I was still in office at this point, but you said that we could exempt a specific building or buildings on the JED property. We couldn't exempt certain employees unless they worked in that building. So we couldn't say, you know, these employees are subject to the JED, but these aren't. But we could say, this building is subject to the JED tax.
I thought they didn't petition in.
But she clarified, I was gonna say they didn't.
So the JED statute does allow you to specify a portion of the JED which is not subject to the income tax. But, you know, whether or not we could draft it, are, are you talking about exempting a particular building for the life of the JED?
No, no, no. Only first, in the first five years.
So hypothetically, in the first portion of the JED, the, the construction period, could we specify that the JED only includes the new construction building? And then for the ongoing period of the JED after construction, or the eternity of the JED, it would include everything on that property, both buildings? And whatever else we're...
All right, hold on. Let's see, what, how that is written.
I knew it was like Austin JED, some of the businesses didn't petition in, and so they were never taxed. But I thought that that was because they chose, if you're within the JED district, you'd be...
Well, that's a, there, so there's two different issues. One is, yeah, if you don't get the requisite petition signed, you have to go back and redraw the lines so that certain parcels are not in the JED. But you then have to still meet the sort of contiguous boundary requirements. After the Austin JED, because of some things that went on at the Austin JED that I will not comment on, the statute was changed to permit certain things that were going on that may have been less than clear under the statute, to permit those things. The statute was written, I'm looking for the income tax exclusion provision, because it's a relatively recent change to the statute.
I think, Brenda, let's give you a few minutes to gather your notes there, because I think we've got a broader topic that is on the same thing that we can continue on with, and we'll, we'll circle back if we can exclude, we won't forget that, Mr. Keane.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm looking for the language. You go on.
While she looks for that, I mean, we still need to decide as, as a group, if we feel like it needs to be segregated upfront rather than flowing through the municipalities or entities. And if so, how much would we want that to be? And some of that may be impacted on whether we could carve out the school employees or not. But I guess, let's first go around the table and say, would you want some contribution set aside in the beginning for purposes of being spent only on the JED or potentially expiring after a period of so, so many years that doesn't exist? But being set aside for that purpose for a period, at least a period of time? I'll start, and I'll say, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, says wow.
I'm fine with that.
Oh, not fine with it? Would you rather that, or would you rather not?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's a really good compromise. I think it, it allows for a good head start for that district, yeah. So I would be fine with a portion of it, I think. If we could justify that. And saying that, I'm gonna go the opposite direction and say, if you set an expiration date, even though I like the idea, I work for the federal government. All they're gonna do is find something to spend it on as swiftly as they can. Well, they should. Well, but it, but it may not be a valid, yeah, it may be wasteful, right? Federal government, somebody, a budget, and says, spend it all right now. Yeah, we can spend it, but it's not necessarily...
All right, let's tackle that when we get to the side, because I think that's...
Okay. Mine's lengthy, in a way. So I am fine with it, and I think it's a good idea. It is twofold. I don't, I am not comfortable with saying you get the, is it $253,750 to the JED Board? Because I think, especially in Germantownship, people hear that we are gonna give an unelected body a large sum of money and just let them disperse it the way that they want. Gives me a little anxiety, if you will. So I think it's a good idea. I don't know if we could set aside, as Mr. Keane brought up, high school? If we could set aside even just the money of the high school employees we put into that JED for the first couple of years, which is like around $40,000. If we did that, then that would be put in a pool. That's, that's like, I guess, I was kinda hoping that school would, like, our job to, do what we believe is best for the township. I think it's the school board's job to do it best for the school, and I was hoping they would have some voice, I guess.
I'm, I don't know if I'm in favor or not. We just got an estimate to repair Clayton Road from Manning to Farmersville West Carrollton, and the total was $640,000. And we're putting in a, a request for OWC for a grant. But our part of that grant is going to be $120,000 in cash and $240,000 in time line. And we can't afford that unless we have money coming in from the JED. But I'd like to do that before, well, depending on the grant, before the school even gets open. So we've got four years or five years to be pushing the grant through, see if we can get it. So we've got four years or five years to be pushing the grant through to see if we can get it. But I'm in favor of partial money being put back, but not all of it. And you've got Weaver Road that you want to work on. I don't know if you've started getting prices for that or not.
Like, I'm just curious, is this something that you guys have just gotten equipped for now, looking ahead that this is probably gonna have to happen? Or is this something you need to?
Well, it's gonna have to happen because Clayton Road's terrible.
Yeah, I agree.
We get, I mean, it's worse than Weaver, I think. And if we don't, you know, we get, we wanna get started now, that's why we're going through the process.
I mean, there, there is an argument though indirectly, that does benefit teachers, school buses, kids, whoever lives. I mean, it benefits the district, right? So a lot of the investment, even if it does go back into roads or like when the schools are in town here, they don't pay us for our police farm to go up there. So like, they don't, they're not gonna pay you guys, right? But our cops work the football games, our cops go out and drive traffic at the bottom of the hill and the top of the hill. You know, there's a lot of, and that's just being part of the community, right?
Yeah, and I know, I know when I spoke to Mr. Richards just about the, the personal details he was talking, because there's been a lot of debate on whether they need a second interest coming off the back of the high school, you know, which I, I, I would have thought would have made a lot of sense. I think funding-wise, they're struggling with putting in a second drive off of Manning to get to the back. And, um, he was saying that, you know, well, maybe the right thing to do is, is work with us on getting a police officer out there and when school lets out every day. And so, I mean, there's stuff like that that would absolutely be incremental costs to us if we try to do things like that.
Uh, you're Mark Ross. So they, I think according to the contract, once the money comes in, it has to go to the entities. You just can't put it in Farmer'sville account. It would all have to go to the separate entity. The JED board is really, you know, they, they are the intermediate, you know, that would say, hey, the school needs this money. So it's not the JED board making that decision, the JED board making that decision through their, their, their two school members, the school board member and then the faculty or whatever member. So it's just, I, I could just say that Germantownship is going to get upset with the, with the JED board. Well, you know, the JED board is, Germantownship's gonna be holding the money. The JED board is going to hopefully make those decisions. But, you know, it, it, it's going to be a team effort.
Which, which one of the members will be appointed by Germantownship?
Right, exactly. So, but, but you also gotta consider, once, once you're done with this, you're done. You can't go back and say, hey, I want this money for such and such, you know. You're, it, it goes to the JED board, they're gonna be the controlling, controlling body of this. So, so anyway, yeah, so it's a, it, I don't think it can go, and maybe we can talk to the councilor, Weymer. I don't think it can go into one account. As far as the percentage, what, what percentage are you gonna hit?
Well, I wanna make sure we're all aligned on, would anybody be willing to hold money on the front end of this app? I think, again, this is the stuff we discussed before when we were revisiting it is that we will have an incremental cost. So let's not, let's not be under the guise that this is a free enterprise putting the school out there. But, um, I guess you said you would be aligned to a percentage. Maybe limited, same, 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 same. So it sounds like there should be an agreement. Now, the tougher part is how much? Um, and Brenda, stop me if any point you've got the.
I don't think it's a good thing, I forgot percentages left, that must be quick.
Yeah, right, right.
So, so a couple of things, a couple of things on this topic. Um, the, the JED board can hold money. So, you know, we had long discussions earlier about, you know, how much off the top should the JED board retain? And, you know, the current contract has them retaining enough to pay their annual expenses, insurance and audit fees and so forth. Um, you, you can have the JED board hold money long-term in its account for some future project or need. Um, so it, you do not have to distribute all of the money immediately to the four entities when it comes in. Now, you know, whether you decide you want the JED board to, to hold or reserve some of the money in some of the early years, that's for you to finish discussing. But if you decide you want some of that money available for some future project, it can stay in the JED board account rather than each of the four entities setting up some kind of special account that they can't, you know, access so that it doesn't get spent. But then, at the end of the day, they still have to send it back to the JED board. Um, so it would just be cleaner if the JED board just kept that money. Um, however much it is if you decide on that. With respect to excluding a building from the JED income tax, the statute says parcel. So if the high school is not its own parcel, you're going to exclude whatever is on that parcel that the high school is on. And if you've got construction workers working sometimes on the high school parcel, because I don't know how big it is or what's on it, but if part of the new building is gonna go on that parcel along with the high school and part of the new building's gonna be on a different parcel, it's going to be nearly impossible to track the construction workers' wages for purposes of the JED if you've got them moving between parcels. Now, if the high school is on a parcel that is fairly distinct to just the high school and no construction work is going to be occurring on that parcel, then you can potentially talk about excluding the high school parcel for a period of time. Although the statute doesn't really contemplate having it included and excluded at different times. But if we're talking about an initial exclusion and it then comes back in and stays in permanently, we might be able to draft such language. But again, without looking at a map and knowing where the high school is and what the parcel boundaries are and where the construction's gonna occur, we don't know if that's even possible.
Yeah, that, that, it is. I mean, the, the high school is on a very separate parcel than where the construction will take place. Now granted, as Nick just mentioned when you were speaking, it gets hit their trailer, their work trailer on the high school's parking lot and makes them kind of stink about it. But I guess my, my question would be is, aren't they combining some lots and what's?
Okay, so they bought that house.
Yep.
And that's what they're using as the construction trailer.
Okay.
Instead of purchasing the double wides that most places do. That was part of their cost savings that they proposed to the U E. But, yes, go ahead.
There's six property lots, I think, or something like that right now?
Um, one, two, three, four, five or six.
At least five.
Yeah.
And are they combining anymore down from five or six?
So they are supposed to eventually, that's how, the timeframe I got was eventually combine all.
That was what Mr. Richards had been told us. They don't combine.
They can be combined at any time. They can wait for twenty years and combine them. I mean, that has nothing, you know.
Okay.
So my proposal was going to be, if you guys can put in there that the parcel that the high school sits on now, excluded for X amount of time and then a start date for it to be taxed.
It, it sounds like Brenda's saying statute doesn't speak specifically to.
Yeah.
Do, including and excluding and including, but it sounds like it could be done that way.
Yeah, and as it stands right now, they are all still separate as far as I'm aware.
Although I understand the concept behind it, I feel like that's relatively complex and I'm not sure that the juice is worth the squeeze on that one. It's my personal opinion, I understand the, the point behind it, but if long-term, potentially ninety-nine years, this is going to be put in place. I don't know if the first three years makes a tremendous amount of difference for the legal ramifications that may come with it. But everyone's feel free to, to speak your opinion on that.
Oh, you're gonna drop a hundred and twenty K off the bat over three years?
A hundred and twenty thousand of other people's money off the bat over three years?
Yeah.
I mean, it's always other people's money, this tax will always be other people's money. But with the benefit of that, that district and the, the places that they live and work, you know, which is generally what tax revenue is raised for. This is not to be, you know, spent in a, in a unwise fashion. I mean, that was never the intent of this JED to be created, to be spent in an unwise fashion unless you felt like we've always been spending unwise. So I guess the, the question, well, everyone go around the table, start this way with, with Abra and then Mike. You guys want to try to, you know, um, look at potentially excluding the high school property specifically the teachers?
I, I do not. I think the other, their other cohorts are paying the taxes, so.
I don't think we should exclude it.
I don't have an opinion on the other.
I'm in agreement, I don't think we should exclude it.
Okay, so let's move forward on that one. Now, now it's down to contribution. I think we all agree you set some aside, not to carve out any properties. Brenda, to leave it as the JED district as we have it set today. Now the question's how much?
So I have a, this is just, I'm working and thinking here, so there's four jurisdictions. So how about on a five-year rolling scale? The first year, nothing. Second year, just picking an entity, Germantown, one hundred percent of their contribution goes year two. Year three, one hundred percent of Farmer's Vows goes to the JED. Year four, asks year five, taxing.
What you would say is, is blended wise, just do twenty-five percent a year, just to make it simple?
No, whatever the percentage already is, whatever we're, we're getting in, so we're getting, what, thirty-five?
Thirty-five, right.
Thirty-five. My point is, I guess, they're twenty, we're thirty-five, they're thirty-five, they're ten, is that right?
They're gonna get snuckered in the fourth year, because they're only gonna get ten percent.
Well, well, I guess what I'm getting at is that, you know, the whole type thing, they'll get a hundred percent of the contribution. Why don't we just do twenty-five percent a year? Because it's gonna come off the top and we'll still get our split.
Yeah, I would just, just to make it simple, interesting, but.
Well, the construction years will be, will be, will be a spike rate. Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be five years either. I think that's something we need to talk about. I know, I don't, I have to look at the contract again, but I don't think we had it labeled as five years, do we?
What labeled as five years?
Uh, the introductory period. We have an expiration date of twenty, twenty-five. Yeah, I don't think it was five years.
You've got the one point five percent for five years, that's where that whole thing comes.
Well, I, I think what we started the conversation on was five. Estimated it based on five years, because when we started and then what they're saying now that in fall of twenty-four, we should be in place. So I think we.
For some reason, I thought it was January twenty-five.
I, I think it's, it's, it's an actual date now, that is no longer five years from when we had talked.
That was conversation.
So I think that's why I was getting at, do we wanna do three years because of the construction? But then I was saying all, all hundred percent and you're, you're offering up a percentage of that collection during that period of time. And, and, and that's fine.
Or even ongoing.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So, yeah, we're almost four years now. I mean, by the time we get this even contracted, be four years from now.
I mean, you can knock a year off that, probably be six, because they're anticipated completion date is sometime twenty-four. I remember the conversation about ending at the end of construction, it's when does that actually happen? It can't, occupancy is always a little weird. There's still construction going on after occupancy, so that's why we put a date to it. But that may have been before we hit the August twenty, twenty-four.
I guess before we revisit the date, let's, let's get this contribution piece together and then we can talk. If we wanna back up that date to try to, or better match what, what it says now or what the construction looks like now. But, I mean, percentage wise, everyone, it seems to be on the, on the lower end rather than doing an entire amount during construction. No one wants to do an entire amount. So the construction revenue, I don't have, I, I didn't think we were getting into this discussion. I bring my estimates, like, it looks like you have them there. So it looks like years one through five, we're estimating. This is the total, I think it's the same.
Okay.
It should be, years one through five, yeah, they're, they're pretty close.
Well, this is the twenty-five percent, this is, this is the tendency that one you wanna look at, this is the twenty-four percent.
Yeah, I'm just looking at totally, it should be pretty close. So if we did a, well, we're not even doing five years now, so it's a little bit harder. Let's say it's a, call it a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year is what I believe it looks like, the estimate, um, with a one and a half percent rate, um, during that construction period. So a hundred and forty thousand, we, we do have whatever it may be, ten to fifteen thousand dollars coming off the top, at least like closer to fifteen thousand because you got, you got the insurance, you got to pay you guys for doing the tax collection and you also have the audit fees each year. So if we bring that down and say roughly one twenty, one twenty-five is what could be estimated, I mean, what do you guys think in, in the twenty-five thousand dollar range? What, what's, what's the amount you're thinking?
Are you saying one twenty-five for three years?
Uh, well, that's the construction collection period, yeah. And that's it, construction comes in, we're expected.
Right.
And, and that's why I would, I would caution everyone just because from my tax history, not everyone files the way the revenues get paid.
Like, it's not on the construction side, you mean?
Yeah, we're not gonna be in the business of chasing, you know, suppliers and vendors, uh, for, for not reporting wages within the JED.
Exactly.
You have to have the time or effort and energy. So I would, I would highly make sure people understand that that would be on the higher end of what I would expect personally for it to come in.
So mechanically, would this be a, I guess we can round it up however, but Brenda, would this be, uh, tacking on a percentage to the, the long-term sustainment section of the JED? So right now we've got it at two percent. Would we plus that up for the first, whatever, three years to implement this?
Right, I mean, we could, right, we could word that, you know, however we want. We could up the percentage, you know, for three years or four years and then it falls down to this percentage. Or we could say it's, you know, twenty-five thousand for each of years, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, plus the two percent for administrative expenses. And then after twenty-four, it drops down to just the two percent for administrative. I mean, there's a variety of ways we could word that and structure it.
Do you think the cleanest way would just be to up the percentage during phase one? I don't think you want to do dollar value because like you said, what do you have?
Yeah, less, I agree, I agree.
Brenda, would that be clean enough to do just a percentage? Uh, whether we up that percentage or whether we create a new category? We can keep the two percent adding in and we call this, uh, what, whatever, um, percentage for the first phase?
Right, I mean, yeah, we could do either.
So again, the, the problem being, if you're only gonna put twenty-five percent of your revenue into a collective account that will help improve that JED property, you're still seventy-five percent are going on and spending however you want.
But I think, yeah, I think what we, this is a part that you may disagree with, but what we've all agreed and again here tonight, reiterated this, there will be additional incremental expenses to support that district and the JED is not specifically just for taking a hundred percent of the revenue collected and handing it back to the district and within the district only.
I think it's actually, like, even two examples, we're talking Weaver Road and Clayton Road are on that. And, you know, we're gonna be looking at, um, listation improvements right away as well. Actually, probably before the school comes in. Um, so I, I think there's.
I mean, ju- just to be clear, that, that's exactly how we justified it before, not giving anything set aside initially is because we said that we could use this money to do other things to support that district, uh, that, that we would need to be the ones spending those dollars. So that, that's how it was justified, because I know you've had that question multiple times. But now we're saying, do we wanna take a portion of that instead of decide for the JED board specifically to determine how?
I get where you're coming from, Mark. I've heard one person, but it's one person said that it's probably more, say the exact opposite. Say my taxes are so high, all this money going to the schools, I want that money going into my damn road that's got, you know, full poples, right? Don't give that money back to the schools, spend it in the city or, you know, spend it on township roads. So there's.
Hey, I, I see what you're saying exactly. But if you, and we talked, I guess this is my first point, if you go over this, tie this JED contract, this is what it says the money has to be spent for. And, you know, so if you wanna, you know.
With not the JED, a, or the contracting parties, right?
Contracting parties, but I don't think, I think the emphasis is on spending it within the JED. And I, and, you know, and it misses the other entirely, entirely other point that Mr. Kena brought up at the school board meeting. There's still taxing a small percentage of, of people in, in the district who, you know, that may not get a benefit. But you're not gonna give them the money to have, to do something substantial.
Those schools are building Germantown now, they'd be paying our, our rent, right?
I know.
I mean.
You know, it comes down to fairness, you know.
There's a larger percentage of the teachers that may actually see a tax cut through this too because so many of them are in Germantown right now. Um, that's something to consider.
Do you specify what this large percentage that are gonna see a tax cut are?
I think we found out that seventy-five percent of the teachers that, um, work in Germantown don't live in Germantown, right? So they're gonna go from.
About twenty, thirty percent, I think.
That are there.
That are, that are there, yeah.
Right, so they're gonna go from the one and a half to one and a quarter. They could live in, right, we don't know that, there's.
Well, that's the thing, I, I think, I think, yeah, there's, we, we need to step aside from that because I think we've already tackled this, that Brenda has been adamant, because this was a discussion heavily early on, is does every single dollar have to be spent back in a certain way with that? And, and what, we were counseled early. And, and what, we were counsel early on, is that there is a recognition between all the councils that pass these JEDs and municipalities that, municipalities will incur additional funds, and they need to be able to sustain those without, because of a certain thing happening within a district, causing taxes raised across everyone. Let's say, I mean, we're, we're getting really caught up on some teachers potentially having taxes increased, I understand that. Let's step back and flip the other side of the coin, and say that we do not pass these, and we have to provide incremental services, and then we have to have Farmersville and Germantown raise levies on the broader organization, but it's only to support what's been incurred out at the JED district, or us to have a shortfall, because we are providing policing services and other things, and we can't have income tax raised, you know, because we don't have a levy, and so, we didn't have the foresight to see that, and now the township is upset with us for not having that foresight. So, I think there's two sides of this coin, I feel like this one's been tackled. So, I think we're, once again, doing the due diligence to go back and say, is this the right thing, and, and put a contribution in? I'm, I'm fully on board, said from day one, I'm glad we're getting there tonight, but I am not under the guise that there will not be incremental services and hardship felt by the township, and I am looking out for all three thousand specific German township residents, rather than just one specific set of employees at the school. I wanna make that clear, too. And I hope that the township would recognize that, and if and when this potentially does go to vote, they think through that holistically, and not be short sighted. So, let's get back to the contribution piece, because I, I think we're continually circling this one on, does it justify? And we've already had council opine on this multiple times, so what is the amount of dollars that everyone feels comfortable with? I will throw a number out there to get this started, the bidding start at twenty-five percent, I think is completely, uh, reasonable, um, for whatever that may be, three to four years, so be it. Um, I think twenty-five is reasonable, but again, I'm always open to getting smarter, if people have a different perspective.
I'd have twenty-five percent of a hundred and twenty-five, so roughly.
Of the total contribution, on top of the two percent, the JED district will hold twenty-seven percent out for the first so many years. After that, the twenty-five percent essentially expires, and becomes the two percent maintenance term long-term, and then the JED board can always come back and, and ask for additional dollars based on projects that they see fit within the district.
Jeff Kraus, seven four 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 South Silver, but that's the problem, getting money back from the entities at that point. So, I, I personally think that if you're going to give, you know, the twenty-five percent in the beginning, you do it the entire one hundred year.
Listen, I, I can't argue with every perspective, because I think a lot of them have merit. At some point, we have to make, uh, some kind of, you know, agreement across the board that we think is reasonable for the best of all the municipalities entities involved in the JED district. But I think everyone's gonna have a different opinion on this, I really do. I think you two folks sitting right next to each other, very close relation, have a slightly different perspective of what was presented tonight. So, I think it's a good example of how we all can land very differently on this one, so understand perspective.
Well, twenty-five percent over a hundred years, you have that with Golden Roads out there. I mean, there's always so much you can think in, right? That limit is...
Well, within the JED, that district, I, I think, I think there's question on that, because then it would say, well, why don't we discontinue the JED, or continue to lower the percentage if the maintenance is less long-term? But I think there's a lot of different discussion on that, but I think that, you know, there could be other buildings that come out, or we talked about this, that the YMCA wants to go into the school, and there needs to be things done with it. So, I think, I think there's quite a bit of funds for a long period of time that could be used, but, again, back to where we're at, anybody have a different thought than twenty-five percent, which is roughly, let's call it thirty thousand dollars, if everything comes in, and the loozy colored glasses that we have?
Yeah, I'll point out the obvious, so this conversation is a lot different for the townships than for the, the village and city, because we will still be receiving, in addition to any JED funds, we'll be receiving some income tax funds as well, because we'll sell teachers in our, our district, so, um, I'm... Mike, our council has discussed anywhere from zero to a hundred percent, to be quite honest with you, during this, during this construction period, and it's all on the table. So, would really like to know. Now, there have been some things brought to our attention about this, um, water and sewer delivery that are, are new, to be quite honest, and we'll have all the answers right now, we're working with the engineer and the architect, um, as well as a new, new contractor on that, but... So, we will see some costs right off the bat, and this will definitely help contribute towards, towards that. And, and just frankly, uh, the costs are associated a hundred percent with the, with the new tenant. So, um, it's not because of anything going on in Farmersville, would have been going on in Farmersville, has been going on in Farmersville, a hundred percent associated with the new tenant, so I can say that everything we put towards that listation will be to the benefit of this, you know, new school. I'll be the bad guy.
Yeah, but...
So, so every, all of the figures we talk about with the council, it's basically factored in the current tax collection that, you know, we would get in terms of plus construction. So, the figures I wrote down are more like twelve percent, ten percent plus the two long-term.
Well, it is, but I mean, it could be somewhat material, let's just call it, if it is a hundred and twenty thousand, ten, twelve a year, thirty-six thousand over three, versus close to a hundred thousand over three, um, I think, but once you split that seventy-five thousand or seventy thousand dollar difference between your ten and my twenty-five, between thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent, twenty and ten, you're, you're slightly at seventy, that is four times seven, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, you, you, you...
You lose twenty-five thousand, you, you're Germantown, you lose twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, picture that, you're thirty-five percent.
Right, right, right. I mean, that seventy thousand, really not seventy thousand, you lose only twenty-five thousand, so... I, I think that's what I would carry back to, to Germantown, and say, over three years, if we put twenty-five percent of this in upfront, we would lose seventy, or we would lose twenty-five thousand dollars over those three years, ten grand a year, year is a budget, I think that could, could be...
So, is your ten percent just during construction, or the whole?
Whole life of the construction.
So, how about we do twenty percent for the first construction, and then ten percent ongoing? We're starting ninety percent of it, ten percent is always set back.
The only thing I don't like about that, because I, I don't have a problem with a long-term contribution, is I don't want the JED to feel, as Brian mentioned, that they have the ability to just carte blanche, make investment after investment after investment, year on year, because the money is sitting there. If it's not truly going to draw in additional revenue, then we, as townships and municipalities, would want the JED district to make economic development.
When it comes in, it's in our interest. If they're gonna grow the tax base in the JED, all of them.
It's in all of our interests, to make sure that happens, right?
Like a pool.
I, I heard there's rumors, I don't know.
But Nick, the, the, the listation, everything, is that, that it's not gonna be paid by the school, or it's gonna be all the city of Farmersville paying for that, or?
Um, because it's an existing listation, it looks like it's gonna be our cost. Um, if there were just, if there were new piping required, that would be paid for by the school, but that, they not look to be the case. So, again, I, I meant, we don't have all the answers yet. Um, our previous administrator thought, uh, with, with the help from the architect, that we're good to go. Um, our current administrator looked in a little bit deeper and, and brought up some concerns, so...
Farmersville really is the only one that's providing infrastructure for this project, the school, and, you know, the roads, or county roads, so no one else is totally providing, I agree with that. Our, our business is gonna need the money more than anybody else.
Directly, yeah, I can hear that.
I would say directly, yeah.
But they have the opportunity to, to charge the school thirty-four percent more for their services to get paid back, where none of us can do that.
Sure, that's again...
Lake Road is the town...
That's the goal, every conversation.
I, I, I'm going back to what you said, I, I actually like the five percent, looking at the number now, and I mean, five grand a year, it's not like it's gonna be an overwhelming amount, but they could accumulate to a twenty-five thousand dollar project on the property every five years. I'm okay with that, again, five thousand bucks is not going to, uh, break the bank on this one, to continue to provide economic long-term development.
Did you say five percent, though?
He, he said twenty during the first three years.
Twenty-five, twenty-one, I said five.
That's fine, that's fine, wait a minute.
This is called cover, man.
After what you made, seven and a half?
That's right, yeah.
All right, I know we're getting to Brian a little bit, but...
I think it's gonna last so long, most of you will be dead, and you won't have to worry about it.
Well, thanks for bringing that up.
Technology's changing every day, right?
I like the idea of it continuing.
I think it makes it a whole lot easier for me to go on, along with this, when I know that in the long run, there's something going back.
Yeah.
The alternative would be to create some language in the JED about what, how the municipalities, I guess, keep the money, and what their responsibilities are when the JED board comes to them, and that would be the alternative, I guess.
Yeah, but...
Same result, different... I mean, if, you know, something catastrophic happens in Jackson Township or in Germantown, you know, and you need it, it's gonna be, I guess, you could back out of the JED, huh? Well, you could, I could probably support twenty and, twenty and five.
Five long-term, I, I don't see anything wrong with five long-term.
You do with the twenty?
What is twenty mathematically come out every year?
Uh, one forty, twenty...
You're the math guy, you just...
Twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. If, if all the numbers come in, I would say estimate twenty-five thousand dollars a year, which to us, again, is, is, you know, less than ten grand a year for those for three years, not...
But depending on who pays taxes out there, between ten and thirty thousand, realistically.
No, that's true, I mean, it's not, um, Mike?
Twenty-five.
Twenty and five?
Twenty and five?
Yeah.
Ever, what about the five?
I don't think we should five.
I think she said she's okay with five. So, everybody's okay with twenty and five?
Five total, right, we're talking seven, we're talking twenty and five.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, that's fair, um...
I guess the question is...
The only fear is, what happens if you have inflation on audit fees, inflation on insurance fees, inflation on those, and that five becomes less? Because that's a set, well, no, it's not, it's based on revenues that should also play.
Well, inflation affects, affects the income too.
Yeah, that's right, the revenue shouldn't play.
The twenty total?
Well, we were saying, the one basis, should it be five or seven, because we already have two percent set up long-term to keep the maintenance fees.
So, those separate categories are still considered admin fee? Two percent the admin fee, is it a separate category, rounding for five percent? Would it, Brenda, would it all flow into that long-term maintenance pool, or?
Right, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, so, seven percent, they get it, they, yeah, put it in the bank and use it to pay the ongoing expenses, as well as, you know, accumulate the excess for when there's a project.
It's basically in their account, well, once you change that long-term percentage, it goes into their account for, they gotta make sure the bills are covered, but other than that...
That's a point, yeah. Okay. And it gives legitimacy to the JED board, too.
That's right.
Then I have to show enough for an audit, because if we just leave it how it is, they have no, there's no reason to be on that.
There, there is that they're doing their job, because they should come back to us, having a little development, but I agree, they, they have money now to manage.
Well, audit insurance actually may not help, I was looking at, the hospital, maybe, it's almost saying, you're gonna win more.
You're saying the insurance will...
Our, our estimates, what we make, what we put in is our estimate, or their, it's supposed to be their actual, is what you're saying, right? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, there may actually be more there.
Oh, okay, that's good, that five sounds reasonable.
The two was the minimum, right, so...
All right, are we on twenty and five?
Just real quick, it's a, it's a five total, not two plus five. Is that what we said?
I thought it was two plus five, because you've got your two percent administration.
Oh, I think she just said it's gonna go the same five.
Well, it does, but the question is, are you having five percent go in there, or seven percent?
Yeah, I, I think there's a debate, because like Brian said, potentially, the insurance could have been estimated on the high, some of the stuff could have been on high. We didn't necessarily need two percent to believe to cover those. The question is, do we need a incremental five on top? I think we're splitting hairs here.
Good six.
There you go, I mean, honestly, six sounds good to me.
Yeah, I was just asking a clarification question.
No, I hear you, but, but, six, six?
Six for three, or no, I'm sorry, twenty for six for phase two, twenty for three years, six, six, seven, for eternity.
Does the twenty include the administration?
Does the twenty include the two percent?
That's my question.
No.
Well, wait, wait, it's included in the rest of them.
I really split that.
That's right.
It's gonna be twenty-one, because it's five plus an incremental long-term, and it's, you gotta have a way to, like, a reasonable, I mean, we think that, that the cost of this ongoing is one to two percent. Everyone agree on that?
Yeah.
We say six long-term, and you say you're giving twenty percent upfront for economic development, not for economic development and whatever ongoing costs. So, if we're saying ongoing costs are one to two, twenty-one?
Six and twenty-one.
Or seven and twenty-two, one of the two. Now, I'm fine with either one, but I think that's the way you justify the right perspective on this. Right, Brian?
I'm calling six and twenty-one.
I was gonna say, I thought you wanted seven and twenty-two. Okay, six and twenty-one, go once.
I'm good.
All right, Brenda? I'm spreading out quickly.
Let's, let's talk about that date, too, as you make a change. You and in twelve thirty-one, twelve thirty-one, twenty-five, that's twenty-six if you face one period. If they're telling the pocket twenty-four moving date, we give them a little construction.
Let, let's think, though, let's be honest here, when do we think construction will start?
I would just say it's gonna start whenever we pass the JED, if we pass the JED, it's gonna be immediate.
Okay, so that gives us twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, and you're saying one, one, twenty-five?
Right now, it's at the, at the end of twenty-six, I would say we should move it to twenty-five, so that we limit the teachers' exposure for that.
Fair enough, one, one, twenty-five would be the, the date that we would step down from one and a half to one and a quarter percent, Brenda?
Well, are we doing twelve thirty-one, twenty-five, so taking a year off of it?
You're saying one, one, twenty-six, what?
Right now, right now, it's twelve thirty-one, twenty-six, yeah. If we take a year off, it'd be December thirty-one, twenty-five.
And that lets them get some of their...
But that would be different than in the term of the twenty, I just, I just don't think it's that...
I mean, it, it would probably make sense for the teachers to start in August, but that would be tough on Farmersville for tax administration. Um, it would, it would actually be very difficult, I think, if you break it down. I'd rather just make it a, a twelve thirty-one, one, one split.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Whether you wanna agree that they're gonna be done by August twenty twenty-four, if they're gonna be done, I mean, spring twenty twenty-five is probably more relatively difficult to do these projects.
Yeah, but listen, I, I a hundred percent agree, we need a calendar, for your purposes, that should be non-negotiable. But the question is, if, if the construction is supposed to end in, in fall of twenty-four, is one, one, twenty-five sufficient? The reason I say it, because we're doing three years, and we're starting potentially...
I'm fine, I'm fine with that date, I just, I just think, I just think it shouldn't be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-sixth, right now.
I agree, I agree, but I think one, one, twenty-five, the reason I'm getting at one, one, twenty-five, because likely, hopefully, if this thing does move forward, it will be near the beginning of twenty-two, the three-year period would be twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, that twenty percent would expire at the same point in time that we'd step down to one and a quarter, which would make sense.
Ninety percent of construction should be done by then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say, let's do it, unless it's gonna be, so phase one expires in twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and we're talking a quarter percent too, anyway.
That's right, that's right.
Twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five?
Twelve thirty-one of twenty-four, is when...
We'll change income tax rate.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make sure she's got the contributions right, moving forward, you have the big changes to the contract.
The contribution would now...
Twenty-one percent is for the first, is also through twenty-four, and then, starting in twenty-five, it goes to six percent.
Correct.
Okay.
You know what's rather interesting? That probably keeps all these entities very smooth over that entire period, because we're gonna lose the construction revenue at the same time, steps down on the tax rate, which would keep us at a very, very smooth election.
Sure, now, we have the requirement, rated over four grand, they gotta come back, right?
That's, anything...
Expenses over.
Oh, yeah, any individual, anything.
At that point, the money's there, though, right? I mean, I guess, word to your point, if you're giving them...
Well, that's what I thought it was, I thought it was money that got inaccessible, we expected to collect, they would have to come back to us.
It's just anything that has to come, if it's more than four grand. Board's allowed to prove four grand. So, now, if you're giving them, you know, twenty-five grand, they can only spend four of it, should we look at that number? I'm thinking that, yes, why have the board if they have to come to us? But the money's stuck there, right? If, if you and Ever get mad at the JED board and say, no, forget you guys, you could hold it, you killed the entire thing, right? Yeah, hold it hostage.
Yeah, no, I...
But we also want that accountability, which is what we...
But we also want that accountability, which is what we, you know, hope people.
Well, and, yeah, I, I think the intention was, because they always had to come back, the way it was originally established, to get additional funding, was that there was no reason for them.
But we've changed that tonight, so.
Well, I agree, so that's what I'm saying, I think then, that, that.
It would be illogical for anyone to, unless the project is.
Well, it's up to the jet board, that, but that's, the only, the only thing here is, do we want, to Ever's point earlier, have another check in balance, so people don't claim this is a water district type thing, you have four, or five unorganized people, they can now, because we're funding this with a hundred thousand dollars upfront, to be choosing however they want to spend a hundred thousand dollars without any input from municipalities.
I think we do have those checks and balances in place already, I mean, they're getting a limited amount of the total income, right? So the municipalities are still receiving majority of this income. I, I just think that check and balance is already built in, I think that.
And we appoint the board members.
Right.
Okay.
And the school appoints their own, school board appoints their own.
So, no, remove a hundred percent of the dollar limit that they have, right?
Um, I don't think we need to do that, I think you're saying just leave them. Uh, we have to specify a dollar amount, for some reason, I don't remember exactly what the reason was, other than that.
Well.
No, we, we.
So are we talking about how much money the jet board can spend without getting permission of the other parties?
Correct. I don't think we want the.
Right, so we put in an amount that would mean they could sign the audit contracts and the insurance contracts without going back to the four parties, but it would not allow them to spend large chunks of money on an actual improvement without getting permission from the four contracting parties.
Are they, could they have the ability? Do they have the ability to, to enter into a debt agreement to, to borrow on behalf of the jet district?
Not for more than whatever we put in here, twenty five hundred, or what, whatever amount we put in here, which of course, I cannot find at this moment, but, yeah, that nominal amount, couple thousand dollars, no. Beyond that, they cannot enter into a debt contract without the four of you signing off. And that current amount.
Challenging, because, well, I think five thousand dollars is fine, because I, I don't want them to be able to enter into that contract, so they wouldn't do that, but.
Let's get clarification real quick, Brenda, are those two separate items, that they have a spending cap, and then the separate item is that they can never enter into a debt contract without coming to us?
No, they're subsumed under the same provision, they cannot.
Can we make those?
Sign a contract or enter into a debt obligation, it's all part of the same, I'm looking for the, here, the.
Can we make, can we make those two separate items?
Prior to occurring, any obligation, debt, or liability exceeding four thousand dollars, the board shall have obtained the approval of the contracting party.
Right, so could we make those two separate items, could we add some verbiage in there that says they're not ever allowed to enter into a debt contract without coming to the municipalities? Or, um, and that they could spend up to, I mean, even throwing out a huge number, like twenty five grand, without needing approval from municipalities for that? I mean, basically what we're doing today is.
Well, I mean, it, yeah, it gets into a little bit of a, you know, kind of trying to define and split hairs, because debt under the code can be defined as a contract be, if you're not paying on day one, and most of the time, you don't wanna pay upfront necessarily, depending on what the contract is, so that contract.
Long term's pretty cut and dried over twelve months, I mean, I, if, I would settle for a long term debt contract, they don't enter into a long term debt arrangement. I, I, I don't know how we do this, but I do think there is a lot of sensitivity around that, and I don't anticipate the board wanting to enter into something like this, but that's something I would never want them to do.
Right, exactly.
But, I mean, they're also not going to get funded on what their revenues will be, in that, I mean, no bank is going to lend.
I mean, honestly, if Germantown should follow Ever being, uh, is to spend the money poorly and borrowing money, you, you pull out of the jet and it's done, right?
Or you appoint another board member, there's a lot of ways to make that.
But I'm a worst case scenario.
Yeah.
Why don't you set, why don't you set up something like ten K, that would allow them to, to fund some smaller projects, if, I don't know, a classroom needs something, or whatever, but at the same time, if they want a project, yeah, they wouldn't have to come to us, we're all, have the little thing, right?
I'm okay even with twenty, because I mean, see, buddy, you get back to the percentages, twenty thousand dollars, you guys owe, you know, seven grand of that, if something catastrophic ever occurred. Twenty gives them the, because the other thing we gotta remember, this is an index for inflation, twenty years from now, they come back and they're asking for nickels and dimes, I mean.
You're gonna have that much in your wallet.
Well, but you can amend that part of the contract later, I mean, so if you're talking about changing the four thousand to ten thousand, and then worried that in thirty years, you know, ten thousand is equivalent to four thousand today, and that they'll need the ability to maybe spend fifteen or twenty thousand. You can amend that paragraph without doing the whole jet process over. To, to do the whole jet process over is when you're adding territory to it. If you wanna change some of these provisions, you just need the jet board and the contracting parties to sign off on these types of amendments later.
Clear, we got you, Brenda, we all agreed, twenty thousand dollars is the limit, go, change four to twenty, please.
Yeah, 'cause I don't want them coming to us for a two thousand dollars.
No, well, you would all have to agree, right? That's the, that's the fear, the part I don't like, is that we all have to then align, or they're held hostage, once again.
Is that a simple majority, or is that?
I think it's a simple majority, right? It doesn't really, but I would, yeah.
Again, contributing money, I don't think anybody's gonna get held up.
No, yeah, it shouldn't be, okay. Brenda, do you think there's anything else that we need to address that, that would help you make these revisions?
Well, yeah, uh, okay.
Brenda, are you sick of us yet?
No.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think about how to word, I'm just trying to think about how I'm gonna have to word some of these changes, so, yeah.
They can spend up to twenty every time they want, if they wanna spend the project, it's twenty one thousand, they have to.
What about that?
They, they could enter into a debt arrangement of twenty thousand dollars without.
Per year?
No. For on track. You gotta think, no, no lending is the, should be lending, you know, on their revenues.
Well, that's what we thought about the water board too.
True, I did that.
Well, I think that that had to do with, we did have the revenues.
Again, that's where we have the power to quickly, quickly plug whoever we represented there, and say, look, you're not making wise decisions.
The water district was tied to Germantownship, Jackson Township, who did have the revenues. This entity will not have those types of revenues. So they will not, if, there's no faith on the face of this earth that will lend them.
Oh, yes, there is.
No, there's not, not.
Well, the water district was forecasted on, on selling water.
Well, but the thing is, it was backed by entities that had much larger revenues.
Yeah.
This will not be backed by an entity that has larger revenue base, their revenue base is the revenue base.
That's very sick.
They will not be contracting us in a debt arrangement.
Exactly, so, uh, board members have to be removed for cause, they have to have a good reason to remove them, you just can't remove, but somebody because they, they did something as far as spending some money that you were having.
Beyond the term expiration, right?
We do know that it's easier for an appointed board member, though, than an elected. Uh, you can, you can remove an appointed board member pretty.
Well, they have terms, right? There are terms when you see them, so you just don't reappoint them.
Like, you know, in far worse case scenario, twenty thousand dollars tomorrow, that would work pretty good shape.
I'll keep my mouth shut until the day comes, but I would have hoped to, yeah. Okay, Brenda, I guess let's talk, while you're looking, if there's anything else we need to tie up notch, let's look at the dates, um, superintendent just texting back, says he'll have it to us in the next couple of days, so I'll look for that as well, on the property descriptions. Next, the next meeting will be probably logically scheduled after the September thirteenth board meeting, although, question is now, after these alterations, we need to get this back through all the prosecutors and over to the school in advance of that meeting. If we want to meet immediately after that meeting.
We all agree on it, we're just talking about letting our, letting our individual councils review it.
And there's nothing that's changed.
Well, we can quickly point out what has been changed.
Yeah, that's true.
Right. It's, uh, easy red line document, should, I mean, that should.
No, it should, I, I don't wanna put pressure on Brenda, though, to have it done in the next week, you know, if she has other competing priorities. Brenda, I guess, on this one, what we're talking through, September thirteenth is the next board meeting, and, and like you said, we need to kinda have everything kinda lined out for the school board before they would petition in, and that's when they've intended to vote. And so.
Right.
Before that, working backwards, we would need the prosecutors to align again, the legal councils to, to align. Now, we can, we can help pave that way by, you know, sending them a red line document, just clearly laying out the four or five bullet points that we've changed, they've already reviewed the document, and if they see redlined, I don't think it should take long, and we can help move that along, but I guess the question is.
Four, yeah, it's four numbers, right, exactly.
The date, and.
Your contribution.
Cap, and then the.
Term test.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll be able to do that.
Okay, so, we're, we're making our, your job simpler, is what Brian's saying, but I don't know that that's the case, but, uh, you let us know when you think you, you can have the changes made, and, and if it's reasonable for us to meet back after the school board meeting, and we think we can hit, getting this, the school ahead of September fifteenth.
Yes, I will, I will have this to you, um, I will commit to having this back to you by the end of next week, and hopefully sooner, given, I'm looking at when my secretary's going to be out of the office. So, yeah, I mean, I will have this to you no later than next Friday, the twenty seventh, and hopefully sooner. With the changes we talked about tonight, I have written some of them, one of them is gonna take a little bit of work to figure out how to word this one, but then I need to go back through the entire document and make sure that where we need to adjust, anything else other than the obvious sections, then I also need to take a look at the bylaws and make sure nothing in there is affected, or if it is, that we make the corresponding changes there as well. Um, so, yes, I will get that done by or before the twenty seventh.
Okay, um, and I don't know how you did it last, I know you were having trouble with the new and, and the annual, and I reached out to them, but you were sending these individually to the, to the legal councils, right?
Well, they were copied on the distribution when I was sending it out to the four entities, I was including the, the legal counsel, the prosecutor's office, and Tom. I now have, uh, an email from Farmersville Legal Counsel, so I can copy their legal counsel as well when I send out the next red line.
If, if you'll do that, Brian, can you follow up with Tom immediately, you with your counsel, I'll send some to the annual, and tell them that we need within a week that only four things have changed, within a week, we would like them to weigh in, so that way we can then get this sent, if that's, that puts us early September, then we would have a week to still send it to the school. I think it might be wise, Brian, if you sent a note to superintendent now and let him know that we're making these adjustments, it just makes it more favorable from their perspective, or should.
I'll just put together one page.
Yeah.
He can send out to the school board.
If, if you do that, and then, and then we can, uh, tell them that they hopefully can anticipate getting this finalized ahead of the nine thirteen deadline for them to vote. Okay, does that sound like a fine plan, Brenda, are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna write down the note, we, uh, or my, my notes, so the next thing to do, does anybody else have anything else to discuss tonight?
So, next steps, the school will vote on the petition in September.
If we can get this done September thirteenth.
We're doing where they go, yeah.
If they petition in, we need to have a meeting immediately after, so we can set a thirty day notice for the public hearing, and then the public hearing will be within thirty days, we take the feedback from that, decide if we wanna make any further changes, if we do, we go back for another thirty days in public hearing, if we don't, we can then send it to a vote in the municipalities and then.
Brenda, is there an order that that vote needs to occur, like, does Germantownship have to vote first, or does it matter?
No, it does not matter, you can have any order you want for those, and I am working on getting drafts of those resolutions and ordinances pulled together for your legal counsel to review.
Then we just flow to our, whatever our next meeting is.
Yeah, whenever your, next meeting after the public hearing is, yeah, you would, I mean, normally, they would appear in the order of the normally scheduled meetings, so whoever's meeting it first would take it first.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Thank you, Brenda, we'll look for it before the twenty seventh, we'll ask the prosecutors to get with us within ten days after that, and then we'll be able to send it over to the school ahead of the nine thirteen deadline, they'll have the ability to vote if everything's done. Um, we do need to go ahead and talk next meeting, which, let's, let's tentatively schedule it for the, that week, the nine thirteen, if everyone's okay with that, and if something doesn't get done, then we can, we can, well, say canceled, but then we don't have another meeting to meet back and decide when the next meeting would be after that. Do you wanna have two dates now, and, and we can maybe cancel the first one?
I mean, basi- based on feedback from school last time, I would say, or school board, I should say, last time, the only thing that we're gonna discuss at the next meeting is wanna have a public meeting, right?
As, as long as we get everything to them and they vote.
Right.
Yeah.
And we get the legal descriptions, 'cause we can't schedule the public hearing until we have everything complete post, before we schedule the public hearing.
Post soon.
I'm just thinking, yeah, should be a short one.
All right, let's, yeah, let's, so we make it for like that, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, for a short meeting. I can't do the fourteenth, I have a junior high football game that night, Tuesday.
I can't do that either.
Okay.
What about the fifteenth at like six?
Can you do that?
I'll be here, right.
Seven, I think.
I'd be right.
Is that correct, Mr. Setz, is that at seven?
The school board's at seven.
Yeah.
What are you doing, sorry?
If we could do six thirty, that'd be a lot better than that, I have a meeting.
Six thirty on the fifteenth? I hate to push it back, if, let, time wise, is there any way we can do like eight o'clock, 'cause I've got junior high football practice until seven, and then I gotta be at the pool board meeting at seven, and then I've gotta. I run a practice, seven thirty, I think seven thirty, sort of, seven thirty nine.
How about Saturday morning itself?
No.
Oh, I can, Mike.
Can we do the Thursday after seven?
I can't do Thursday, so the fourteenth, the Tuesday, everybody's out, no matter what time on the fourteenth.
Right.
What time does everybody go to work?
Four o'clock.
I get four kids up and a grandma. I see it in the morning on the fifteenth, I, I'm, why don't we?
You're joking about, uh, some people think you're joking about Saturday morning, but that's fine for me.
Yeah, I think mine's for me.
I'm probably thirty morning. We have a soccer game at eleven, I haven't gotten up until then.
This is just to set the public hearing, right? I mean, that's what it should be, is, well, hear what the school said, and then, yeah, eventually move forward with public hearing date.
Who's bringing the coffee and donut?
For what time? E Y O.
I, I would have to do relatively early, like eight AM, because I think I do have practices again at, at nine, I think.
What day are you looking at then?
Saturday.
Saturday, eighteen.
Nine AM game, so you have to.
I don't, I'd have to be out of here by nine.
So eight AM for everyone? Eight AM.
Dream come true.
Eight AM.
Seven AM on.
Eight, eight.
Eight AM on the eighteen?
Yeah, that's after your brunch, you'll be fine.
Oh.
Hey, will you give us a schedule?
I will be calling in, just so you know.
Thank you, thank you.
Fine, fine with me.
All right, eight AM, next meeting, I, I'll make a motion to the journal.
All in favor?
Hi.
Your turn at seven thirty.